Lori, we thank you for us being able to be here together today. And I pray for each member of this council and the people who work so faithfully for us here in the city of Goodlettsville that you'd bless them with wisdom and the ability to do their job. And we pray that you would bless us tonight with your presence in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. Patrick, as always, thank you so much for your time. All right. At this time, would everybody join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please? Madam Recorder, would you please call Row?
Mayor Tinnan.
Here.
Vice Mayor Duncan.
Here.
Commissioner Anderson.
Here.
Commissioner Gilmore.
Here.
Commissioner Walker.
Here.
Thank you, Madam Recorder. Commissioners, before you, you have the reading of the July 10th, 2025 Regular Meeting of the Board of Commissioners by the Recorder for Approval. Is there any additions or corrections? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
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 All opposed. Minister, our approval is written with a five-zero vote. At this time, we're going to open up the podium for citizen comments, and your comments will be held to three minutes. And there's a timer on the wall, so... Mr. Ellis, and also state your name and your address, please, when you get to the mic.
Yeah, my name is John Fay, and I live at 407 Moss Trail. I live about middleway down Moss Trail. I live on the side of Moss Trail. Part of my yard backs up to Pleasant Green Park. And so, I know that on the agenda, there's some discussion about traffic calming. And so, I wanted to discuss some things about Moss Trail. We've been having an issue with Moss Trail. It's cut through, and speeding's bad, speeding down Moss Trail. You guys already know Moss Trail is a residential neighborhood, 30 mile-per-hour speed limit. But what you may not know is that, or probably do, Doug, but let me just call your attention to this, that children walk to and from school down Moss Trail when school's going on. We have neighborhood deer that sometimes crosses the road, especially where I live, where Pleasant Green Park is behind my house. And we, deer come in the backyard. They're not a problem. We like them. But occasionally, they'll cross Moss Trail, and the right speeder hits one, and they're in deep trouble. The electrical, I've had this problem this year. I've had tractor and trailers coming down Moss Trail. It snapped my Wi-Fi, AT&amp;T Wi-Fi line twice. What happens is, is that the electrical runs on the north side of Moss Trail. That'd be the side that backs up to the elementary school. It crosses to get Wi-Fi power, to get Wi-Fi connections. It has to cross over the street. And so, I've had my line clipped twice. My neighbor who's here behind me has a different service, and his has been clipped several times. So what happens, they're telling us, is that the line gets hot, sags. And then sometimes these really high tractor-trailers come through there, and they hit it, and it goes down. Also, too, the way the water drainage on Moss Trail is designed, was designed to work, I guess, by the original city planners that built that subdivision in the 50s, is that there's a ditch, a water ditch, that is on the north side across the street from me. That'd be the side that backs up to the elementary school. And water's designed to flow down that ditch. And then, as you go down Moss Trail, it's, I know where it's at, but unless you know where it's at, there is a tunnel that runs under Moss Trail. The water diverts to a drainage ditch on the other side. But what's happened is, is over the course of the years, that the driveways have sunk, and that where it crosses over that ditch, and they create a dam when it rains heavy. And that water will cross the street, creating kind of like a hydroplaning situation there. So that's another issue with speeding track, traffic. Sometimes, if it's heavy rain, there's rain on Moss Trail, and they get skid, run into our yard. This is another issue that you guys need to consider. Whenever someone on Dickerson Road turns on Moss Trail, they bypass the business district, bypass the business district. What I mean by that, when I worked in Nashville, on my way home, I was always stopping at grocery stores, hardware stores, picking up this and that. This impulse stuff, you should pass. What happens is, is that when they bypass, when they go down Moss Trail, they bypass HG Heels, and they pass Ace Hardware, places where businesses that could use the business. These folks coming home from work, stopping in HG Heels, pick up some bread or something, or stop by Ace Hardware, pick up something. We lose the sales tax revenue, and those businesses are cheated out of that impulse business. So, that said, Moss Trail needs to be dealt with. It's gotten worse. And at this point, if traffic humps, the answer, I'm for them. So, I just wanted to just tell you what we're going through on Moss Trail, and hope you guys can help us come up with a solution. Now, I'll take just a second. I thought that there was going to be something on fireworks legislation or an ordinance. And so, my only comment about that is, is in Goodlettsville, fireworks, just like two or three days before the holiday, two or three days after the holiday, all night long. It's like a holiday week with fireworks. And somehow, that needs to be dealt with. I don't mind people shooting firecrackers 4th of July night, but it needs to stop. It doesn't need to be before and after. Thank you very much.
Thank you. And I'm going to add something, Mr. ... Yes, ma'am. Hold on. I mean, you'll have to come to the podium if you want to talk. I live on Two Mile Pike, which is a cut-the-road. I understand, we get the same traffic you're getting. They're cutting through, and they're doing, they're speeding. As far as the electrical or your Comcast lines getting hit, by code, them lines are supposed to be 18 feet at the lowest point of the road. And a lot of these people that are putting some of the lines up now are way below that. And I deal with that a lot myself.
Yeah. What the deal is on that is that I have AT&amp;T, and my neighbor has Comcast. He's got the same problem. Now, what they do is, is that, what they did with us is, is that they came between the telephone poles and ran a line directly across, straight into my yard, okay? They couldn't get up high enough.
But they're responsible for that, is what I'm saying.
Yeah, oh, yeah.
By law, and if you talk to Comcast or AT&amp;T, that's what I mentioned to them more so than ...
Yeah, yeah. They came out, and they fixed it. What they did was, is that they ran the line a different way. They went directly from the telephone pole, and they actually went through my neighbor's yard, which my neighbor's okay with. But at some point, their trees might be a problem on that line, and I don't have control of those trees. But they had to come to me and get it higher. They had to go directly from the pole, raise it, and cut through my neighbor's yard, and hit the side of my house. And so, that's a fix, as long as my neighbor's trees don't get ice up and break the line down.
Right. Well, tractor-trailers, the limit is 13 six, so that's as high. They can't get any taller to go down the road.
Yeah, they clipped my line twice. Now, what they told me was, is that the line, the electric line that runs between the two poles didn't have a guide cable, and so therefore, those electric lines sagged, and they couldn't, they had to attach it to those electric lines to come straight across. And so, in so doing, they couldn't get the height they needed.
Yes, sir.
So...
Well, thank you. Appreciate your comments.
My name is Doug Mayberry, and I live at 411 Moss Trail. And I kind of want to echo what John was saying. I was on my lawn mower mowing my yard one day when a pickup truck came flying down Moss Trail and actually took out their mailbox, which is a brick structure. Bricks went flying everywhere. Traffic on Moss Trail is horrendous. I know I see cars doing 70 and 80 miles an hour on the straight part of Moss Trail. And it's dangerous. My, our daughter lives in Franklin. She's afraid to let the grandkids come to our house to play outside because of the traffic. I understand that. Second point. There are houses in our neighborhood, one directly next door to me, that has a vehicle parked in the front yard that doesn't run. Grass is about that high around it. I mow that yard. I've asked them about it. I've asked them to move that vehicle. They don't do it. I don't know what the procedure is to get it moved, or towed, or whatever.
If you'll get with one of us after the meeting and get us that address in private, we'll look into it for you.
Number three. There is at least two houses on Moss Trail that I cannot begin to tell you how many families are living in the house. I know one at 424 Moss Trail. I counted eight vehicles in their driveway, and they weren't having a party. That was how many cars belonged to people that lived there. There's another one, and I forget the number off the top of my head. But I just wanted to bring those things to your attention. Anything that can be done to eliminate the speeders would be helpful. I've talked with some of the police officers, and I've said, please, set in my driveway with radar. And they have, and they write tickets left and right. They're there for a little while, and then they're gone. I mean, I understand they can't sit there all day. But it may be six months before you see them back.
Yes, sir.
That's my two cents.
Thank you, Mr. Mayberry. We appreciate your comments. And I assure you that, and everyone here that's going to be speaking on the Moss Trail, we're definitely working on that and going to continue working on it till we get, hopefully, the problem solved. And we've been in several meetings and talked and so forth. But yes, we're definitely working on that. I mean, that's why we're here tonight.
I have some visual aids. Can I get my visual aids out? Is that around here?
Yes, ma'am.
It's an old-school PowerPoint presentation.
Good evening. My name is Jamie Gaines, and I live at 420 Highland Heights Drive. I've lived at this address since October of 1994. I'm here tonight to share with all of you my concerns regarding a situation in my neighborhood. Two years ago, the spring of '23, my neighbors at 416 Highland Heights began feeding deer in their backyard. Due to the close proximity of our homes, I became concerned about the increased wildlife presence on my property and the potential damage that the deer might cause. As the feeding continued, the number of wildlife increased. They were in my yard, they were on my deck, they were under my deck. They were eating my plants, damaging my landscaping, digging holes under my deck, and burrows in my lawn. I tried to discuss the feeding situation with my next-door neighbors. They declined to have a face-to-face conversation. At their request, I emailed my concerns, along with documentation and photographs of the issues. They declined to accept any responsibility and stated they would not discuss the situation further. So here we are, summer of 2025, and the feeding continues. Not only are my 416 neighbors feeding the deer, they're now feeding wild turkeys, groundhogs, skunks, raccoons, and possums. And the numbers are increasing. It seems the wildlife have invited all of their family and friends to the Highland Heights Cafe. And did you know that the United States Department of Agriculture has stated that if a deer herd is provided with an abundance of food and no predators, the herd will double in size in three to five years? Two of those pictures are made at the same time. We had 22 deer in our yard at one time. Over the past two years, not only have these animals caused extensive damage to my property and the property of my neighbors, the presence of these animals is also drawing coyote predators to our area. These coyotes are coming looking for dinner, and as evidenced by the carcasses, they're finding it. Over the past two years, I've watched my neighbor unload large amounts of feed and grain from their cars. So I did some math. So if we say that they put out 80 pounds of food a month, which I think is very conservative, since that feeding has started, there has been over a ton of food placed across my driveway and have drawn a whole lot of wildlife activity. I could tell you all sorts of numbers, and I could show you all sorts of pictures, but I don't have time, because I know that clock has just run out on me. I have lived in this house for over 30 years, and I have never, ever encountered issues like I'm having now. To say I am frustrated is an understatement. As a homeowner here within the city limits of Goodlettsville, it appears that I have no rights, and I have no recourse for this problem. For the first time in 30 years, I'm considering selling my home, because I'm tired of it. Tonight, I am asking this governing body to consider banning the feeding of wildlife within the city limits of Goodlettsville. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Appreciate your comments.
Hey, y'all. I'm Valerie Fowler, 821 Rachel Drive. And I just wanted to ask you about the fireworks and let you know that at least for me personally, it's a problem. And I know that it is for a lot of people that live here that have children, have dogs and cats that are constantly scared by the excessive fireworks. I'm not talking about just 4th of July, that's bad enough. And my birthday happens to be on the 4th of July. I happen to hate fireworks, because I love my dogs more than I love fireworks. So, I would ask that you would enforce the proposal to keep it to the 4th of July and to New Year's Eve on those days specifically, and ban all of the other days within the city limits of Goodlettsville. My other concern is, the lady behind me was talking about somebody shooting them off yesterday here in the middle of August, when it's not raining, and we're so dry, and it's so dangerous. But the other thing that comes to my mind constantly, in addition to our animals, is the deer that, you know, that does constantly go through. And I have a high deer neighborhood. But it scares them. They run out into the street. And then my other thought is all of our veterans with PTSD. And we know, we know that those big bangs scare them and affect them so deeply. And I don't understand why cities don't do this. I've only lived here for three years. I don't feel like I have that much of a voice here. But I came here tonight just to ask, because this is something very personal to me. I reached out to Jesse after the 4th of July of this year, my third year here in Sumner County. I'd lived 25 years in Davidson County, where we go through weeks and weeks and weeks of war zone, you guys. It sounds like war zones outside our homes in the month of July. It's so terrible. But I reached out to him this year, because I felt like that was going on here. I work from home. I own my own business. And when my dogs are reacting, and when I can hear them, you know, outside, it's just, it's not good. And I've reached out to, also to, the Goodlettsville Police Department. And they say that even though it might be the 10th or the 15th of July, they can't do anything until the time of your noise ordinance kicks in. It's either 10 or 11 o'clock at night. I can tell them exactly which house they're coming from, but they said until 10 or 11 o'clock. I don't know what time y'all go to bed at night. A lot of us don't wait till 10 or 11, though, do we? So, that's my two cents, and I wanted to share that with you guys tonight. Thank you so much.
Thank you for your comments.
Okay.
Does anyone else want to speak before we close this portion? If you don't mind, please state your name and address. Thank you.
Hello. My name is Claiborne Garrett. I live at 416 Moss Trail. And my comments in regards to the speeding on Moss Trail. And I don't know, it's an uneducated question, because I don't know what your plans are to try to slow down the people that come through there. And my hope is that it's not a whole bunch of speed humps, because there are other alternatives, like they're using Antioch and such. And another thing I was concerned with, speaking of the deer population, I have, I guess, a different perspective. I don't have as many deer, but I do have a few. And my concern was more with having a deer crossing, especially considering the way the speeders come down through there. And it doesn't really bother me. Matter of fact, I have a family of them living in my backyard right now. I cut down limbs so they can eat trees, so I guess I may have pissed that lady off, too. But that's my two cents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thanks for your comments. Anyone else?
How you doing? My name's Linda Lowry. I'm owner of Music City Fireworks. And next year will be our 55th year of selling fireworks in Goodlettsville. And it's a family tradition for us to sell. It's my daughters, my son-in-laws, my grandchildren are involved. We've sold and obeyed all the, you know, we always, and everything that we've ever done, we've done it right by the book. Now, I think most people will tell you that do buy fireworks. It is a family tradition for them as well. And I think if you start restricting days, it's going to create confusion. I don't know if you remember back during the pandemic, there was a lot of different things came out, and you've rumors that you couldn't shoot here, shoot there, and it just created a lot of confusion. So I feel like it would be hard ...... to get the word around. I think it would really be a deterrent of business, and I depend on that business to pay bills, to do everything. So, if anything that would hurt sales, I think, and, you know, I'm all about safety, too. And I have, you know, I understand the ...
... leave. Resolution 251278, a resolution authorizing the city to participate in the Property Conservation Grant Program through public entity partners. Resolution 251279, a resolution approving an application with the state of Tennessee Department of Tourism, Tourism Enhancement Grant. Resolution 251281, a resolution authorizing an application with, for a project support grant from the Tennessee Commission for the United States Semi-Quincentennial in 2026. 251282, a resolution acknowledging an application for a tourism marketing grant from the state of Tennessee Department of Tourism. Resolution 251283, a resolution authorizing application for a Blue Cross Blue Shield Tennessee Health Foundation grant as it relates to the construction of new courts. And Resolution 251284, a resolution authorizing an application for a community support grant from the Tennessee Commissioner for the United States Semi-Quincentennial of 2026. Mr. Mayor, Commissioners, these are the six items that have been placed on the consent agenda. Any can be removed at the request of any Commissioner. So staff recommends approval for, as consent.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on any of these six items? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. The consent agenda items passed with a five-zero vote. Moving on to unfinished business. Excuse me. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1117, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 251117 is an ordinance of the Board of Commissioners of the city of Goodlettsville, Tennessee, amending the municipal court cost by increasing the amount by $1 in accordance with Tennessee Code Annotated 168304A. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, a second reading and requires a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do I have a second? Thank you. At this time, we're going to open this up for a public hearing. If anyone would like to speak on this, please make your way to the podium. Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and move on to any Commissioner discussion. Seeing and hearing no Commissioner discussion, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a five-zero vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1117, please. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1118, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, ordinance 251118, an ordinance to amend ordinance 211011, beginning, being an ordinance to adopt the 2018 International Series and amend Title 12, Chapter 1 of the Municipal Code, being the standard building code, maintenance code for the City of Gullisville. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, a second reading and requires a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. We're going to open up the podium for the public hearing. If anyone would like to speak. Seeing no one make their way to the podium, we'll close this portion of the public hearing and move on to commissioner discussion. Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a 5-0 vote. Moving on to new business. Mr. Ellis, would you consider ordinance 25-1119, please?
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, ordinance 251119 is an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to permit additional commercial uses in the INT interchange overlay. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is passed by the Planning Commission unanimously. Staff recommends approval on first reading. Mr. Adam McCormick is here to answer any questions in regards to this.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1120, please.
Yes, sir. Ordinance 251120, an ordinance to amend the zoning ordinance to incorporate state law sections for zoning ordinance amendments, public notice, invested rights for development plan approvals. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, on first reading, Planning Commission approved unanimously. And likewise, Mr. Adam McCormick is here to answer any questions as that relates to that.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1121, please.
Yes, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, ordinance 251121, an ordinance adopting tax rates for the City of Gullisville for fiscal year July 1, 2025 through June 30, 2026. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is first reading. Staff recommends approval. This is the certified equalized rate coming out of Metro Nashville's reappraisals this year. For the first time in a very long time, Sumter County Properties and Davis County Properties will have the same tax rate, which is .5068. Staff recommends approval.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Ellis, consider ordinance 25-1122, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, an ordinance to amend the City of Gullisville Municipal Code, Title 7, Chapter 4, by creating a new Section 7 as it relates to dates and time fireworks may be discharged. This is on first reading. This ordinance is coming from Commissioner Jesse Young, so I will let him talk about it.
That's Jesse Walker, Mr. Ellis.
My apologies.
It's okay. I'm keeping tally, though.
Do I have a motion to consider?
No motion to consider.
Do I have a second? Hearing no second, this ordinance will die on the table. Moving on. To ordinance 25-1123, please. Mr. Ellis.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, ordinance 251123, an ordinance to amend the City of Gullisville Municipal Code, Title 13, Chapter 3, Section 2, Subsection 3, by deleting Subsection 3 in its entirety and replacing it with a new Subsection 3 as it relates to exterior coatings of buildings and residences. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, this is first reading. What this requirement is, is that, what this adds to the language, that the exterior coatings have to be the same colors. In other words, if someone boards up a window, they have to come back and paint that as the same exterior color as what the building is there. They cannot, most cases, what we've experienced, someone puts up a piece of wood, or they paint it, whatever they have sitting in their garage, or, and that just creates a nysor. Staff recommends approval of ordinance 1123.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you, thank you.
Well.
All right. Is there any discussion on this item?
Yeah, Mr. Mayor, I have a question. Just, I guess, Mr. Ellis and Mr. McCormick. So if the, if the building is numerous colors, like we have two different tones, would it be, would it match the paint? Are we going to match the paint of the tone where that particular board is? Or we're just going to make all the boards the same color? And I don't mean to get technical, but like if a building's brown and whatever.
Multiple colors, you're going to kind of match the color around it.
Right, yes. So would we, would all the windows be boarded up and painted the same color? Or would it match the actual facade that it's on? So it would blend in better?
I mean, it'd be something we had talked to them about. Like, I know, like example, Arby's property, our building inspector talked to them. Of course, it's a more single color.
And that's a good point. The intent is for it to match the exterior of the building.
Where it's at.
Yeah, where it's at. So now, we may need to look at prior to second reading, adding some language to that. We just added this to a section in our code that is already, already in the place and just added the color coding. But Mr. McCormick, I mean, you have any suggestion?
Yeah, we could come up, I could come up with some, I think, just a couple of words to add to it. I see what you're saying, yeah, because some buildings.
Yeah, I mean, I appreciate.
You don't want to stand out, so.
Sure, absolutely. And I appreciate the work that your department's doing to help take care of this situation. I just wanted to add that.
Okay, we'll come up with something. Let me ask Tim, with us giving him the authority to make that decision, to make sure that it matches the facade, do we have to have it in the wording?
I would, because for some reason, we had to cite someone in the court. For not doing that, there would be nothing to stand on, yeah.
My concern is if it's multiple colors, which color are we going to choose?
Well, that was the building that I was talking about, was Arby's building. I know I had requested that it be boarded up and so, or at least that the boards would match. And I noticed that all the windows that are boarded up are all the same color, but the facade's two different colors. Where it blends in on one area, it kind of stands out on another, so.
Let us talk about it. I would still recommend approval of this on first reading.
Sure.
And let's see what changes could be made, probably just a matter of a few words, as Mr. McCormick stated, and bring it back as an amendment before it's considered in the second reading.
Thank you, guys. Do I have a, well, we've already got a motion. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Ordinance passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Ellis, consider 25-1277, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Resolution 25127, a resolution to ratify and approve the issuance of emergency purpose order for the repair of fiber optic network connecting all traffic signals along Long Halla Park and Conference Drive. This has to do with the fiber line being cut by a contractor at I-65. We have agreement with, the PO has been issued to Stansel. The original subcontractor that showed up on site was the same one that cut it the first time, so Public Services rightfully so declined them doing any work. Since that time, construction at I-65 has created another cut. So this, there may be another change to this next month, but I would go ahead and ask that Resolution 25127 is approved.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do I have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you very much. Is there any discussion on this item? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Resolution passes with a 5-0 vote. Mr. Ellis, consider Resolution 25-1280, please.
Yes, sir. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, Resolution 251280 is a resolution approving an agreement between the City of Gullisville and Civil and Environmental Consultants Incorporated for the purpose of completing an asset management plan for the city. Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, if you all remember, we received a grant for this. This is one of the requirements that Tennessee Department of Environment Conservation is now requiring for further grant applicants. It's in fiscal year 26 budget. Staff recommends approval of Resolution 251280.
Thank you, Mr. Ellis. Do we have a motion to consider?
So moved.
Thank you. Do we have a second?
Second.
Thank you. Any discussion on this resolution? Hearing none, we'll move on to a vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All oppose. Resolution passes with a 5-0 vote. At this time, we're going to discuss possibly making recommendations to adopt the traffic calming policy. Mr. Ellis.
So. Hang on just a second. So, Mr. Mayor and Commissioners, we've had a traffic calming policy in place since 2022. It was the first approved by this body on March 25 of that year. There was an amendment only to the traffic volume counts. That was a part of that in January 12 of '24. Since that time, we have done many traffic studies in accordance to this plan. I know there's been a lot of discussion tonight about Moss Trail, but tonight's discussion really is about traffic calming as a whole. And I know that just by comments and things that I have received, that not all are in favor of speed cushions, which is what is displayed here and displayed here. My question is, or the discussion this evening needs to be, do we take this out of the plan totally? Because it has been in the plan. It's been, our traffic engineer has designed it according to the plan. But if it's something that can't be supported, it needs to be changed. And while we're here tonight, I got Mr. Jack Presley, Mr. Michael Waldron here with Public Services that will, that can help this discussion as well. I do want everyone to understand that none of us are traffic engineers and everything that we do has to meet the requirements of the manual and uniform traffic control devices. Otherwise, we open ourselves up to significant liability in that regard. So with that said, we have about four streets in the city that has met the threshold for physical improvements that would help control the, would help calm the traffic through those neighborhoods. Yes, Moss Trail is one. Caldwell is another. Altaloma is the third. And there's the fourth. I can't remember right now. So I just wanted to bring that before you all for discussion. We cannot change anything tonight, but we just, we just need some feedback to see what, what if anything needs changed. I will say, some of these streets, I'm not sure what, what the alternative is as well. And I'm not a great fan of speed cushions. I'm not here speaking for or against. I'm just saying, I don't, they work. I guess the simplest way to say it. And that's, that's where we are.
Commissioners, I'm going to open this up for discussion with you guys. I've got a few comments, but I'll let you guys go first.
Okay. Am I correct? We have none of these in the city, correct?
Correct.
Okay, you're going to have to.
We have none of these in the city, correct?
We have none in the city. They are in the plan that was adopted as a, as a means to calm traffic. If it is something that is going to create more of an issue than, more of an issue, then we got to figure out an alternative.
That was going to be my next question. I know you said you didn't have one. Because I'm looking on here and it's roundabouts, speed tables, speed humps, raised crosswalks, turn prohibitions, one-way street conversions, street closures, street diversers, correct? That's our options.
That is the options.
So what's the difference in this speed hump and a speed table?
Speed table would be something that goes all the way across the road.
And it looks like it's, okay, longer, but the same height. So basically it goes across.
Yes. In some case, I've seen them much higher, but similar to this, but the full length.
I guess my question is, if we take these out, would we not take those out too? Is that not the same?
Well, that's kind of all, all-inclusive of what it needs to be. Because what, what will happen? And depending on the conversation tonight, whether or not it needs to be a section in there for physical mitigation to the issue. And like I said, and these guys kind of deal with that. I mean, we've never installed any yet. But like I said, just, just from comments and feedback that, that has occurred, just, we just need to have this conversation. And I'll answer any other questions you might have.
Mr. Ellis, do you know, do you recall which year the traffic calming policy was adopted by this board?
2022 was the first version. 2024 was the second version.
Okay. So it's recent. It's kind of my, my goal that this, this body, I haven't been on the board when it was voted on, but this body decided this policy. So this isn't some outdated language. We're only a few years after the policy's adoption that we're now looking at the implementation of what this board voted to do. And now we're considering not doing what the board voted to do. So kind of like, why are we doing this to begin with? Why was the policy put into place if we're not going to follow the policy? It's sort of my, my comment. But I believe the speed cushions, there were five, six, seven, eight of them across Moss Trail. There were, remember the photo, they were stationed out.
The, the plan or the design for Moss Trail was eight locations, which was two at each location. So it would be 16 total. Also called for a speed sign that would be south of Pleasant Green, I think, if I remember correctly.
I guess one, one idea perhaps is, can you, instead of installing them all immediately, can you install one or two sets? And then at the other locations, put something much cheaper? So that's part of the concern here is that they're expensive rumble strips or something like that. And reevaluate in six months and see if you need two more speed cushions and then reevaluate. Is that an option or is that more complicated?
It, I mean, normally if you did something like that, you would kind of center it somewhere that you wouldn't have it the next time you added something to it. that you wouldn't have it the next time you added something to it. I'm sure it could be done. Jack, Michael, do you have any input?
Like a, yeah, I'm thinking like a phased approach.
As far as the speed humps, I know that even if you just do one, I don't think it's gonna solve the problem. Two, it's still not gonna solve the problem. We had the engineer design it to slow people down, so just one or two, I don't think is gonna do it, because once they hit that, they're gonna go full speed again. So, you know, I know we had speed bumps at the park at one time, Moss Trail Park, and it really did not slow people down. They went around them, they sped over them, so, you know, I'm not familiar with the speed hump as much. I'd had to really look at other cities and how they've helped them, but I just know from experience of having them at the park, speed bumps, and it just, it was more, caused more problems than, than helped, so.
You're, you're looking at approximately seventeen hundred dollars apiece, and this is not, do not take this in regards, I'm saying it's costing too much, I'm not, but kind of put everything in perspective, speed hump, one section there is about fifteen hundred to seventeen hundred dollars. The, the speed camera, Jack, y'all came up with five?
Uh, yes, Officer Loach got a quote, it was for fifty-eight hundred dollars, and those for solar powered. Right now, we have the ones that are battery powered, and they're out changing them all the time, so that's just for one of the right-hand signs. It's fifty-eight hundred dollars.
What are the, what are the concerns that folks have with, other than not liking the neighbors not liking the driving over them?
I'll be, I'll be glad to answer this, and everyone here, and Mr. Ellis, this is solely just questions that I've asked other people, other departments, other cities. Some of the concerns that, that I've heard, that has made sense, and then also in a minute, I'm gonna read to you from Curious, which is a census who've done this for emergency services. One of the things that, one of the concerns I heard was, a big problem is because we're doing the Main Street project, the traffic has probably doubled since we started that, because I live on the country road as well, so I'm dealing with it. I know that's part of it. I talked to another gentleman today who mentioned, he lives in East Nashville. He was for it to begin with. Last year, they was snow plowing, and the snowplow couldn't see it, caught the edge of it, flipped it over, it left the bolts sticking up, so cars were hitting the bolts, tearing rims and tires up. So with that being said, and I've talked to the city manager, but like I said, this is just my comments, nobody on the board, so if you, it's gonna be hard to run a snowplow down them roads efficiently, because they're gonna push up to the speed hump, and they're gonna have to raise up, which is gonna dump all the snow right there on the speed hump. The only way you could do it would have the skid loader to push the other sideways, or they could maybe sit back down. So that is a little bit of a concern that, that I heard today, with it getting knocked up by a snowplow, the ones that they did try to use. And on this, this is a census done by a big company, and I'm gonna just read a, a small paragraph. It does slow down according to this census, not me, not the board, emergency services, trying to get to your saying, because naturally the, the fire trucks or ambulances are gonna have to slow down for every speed hump too. And this in particular, small paragraph, it says, "In severe trauma patients, the inability of the ambulance to reach the case within four minutes reduces the likelihood of survival by thirty percent. Each minute of delay of the ambulance response time increased the mortality by eight to seventeen percent, and all emergencies five. In another study, one-minute reduction in ambulance response time increased the survival rate by five point two percent," and this is in trauma patients. And like I said, this is a survey that I'm reading solely off of a census that they've done on this, and this is my comment. So like I said, I'm not an engineer, we, we're not, none of us up here engineers, so I just wanted to share that.
I guess my comment too. I, I've heard from a number of residents on Moss Trail, many of you've heard from some, the same tonight, you know, with the proximity to Gillisville Elementary, I think, you know, that, that's a major concern I have of kids walking to school. There are no sidewalks there. Sidewalks would be very difficult there. So, you know, I, I think we have to do something, and if we look at these two options from the physical measures, that leaves you with roundabouts. There's not gonna be a roundabout on Moss Trail. Raised crosswalks, there aren't no crosswalks, two raised. Turn prohibitions, one-way street, we're not turning Moss Trail into a one-way street. We're not gonna close it down to traffic. And street diverters, I'm not fully insured with, what that is. So if we take those out, that doesn't just, that really don't leave too many options to even have in this active measure portion of the policy, which leads me to the question, why even have the policy? So I, I guess what I'm getting at is I, let's do something about it.
Yeah, we definitely have to solve the problem.
Yeah, and so I'd rather not take something out of the policy for this. We just have to do something, and this seems like the only option we really have.
I mean, Mr. Ellis, other than speed cushions, what would be your second opinion?
Mr. Mayor, I, I really do not know. There is not width in the road to do what I call kind of a, and Commissioner Gilmore wanted charity with me, it's some that's in Germantown. I call it kind of a quasi roundabout where it's smaller area, but it's, the road's not wide enough, and it's not a four-way intersection, it's just three-way. And that's the reason why I wanna have this conversation. I'm kind of lost at what, what to do, and, and what we'll do coming out of tonight, depending on what, what is gleaned from what is said, is go back to our traffic engineer that we have on the on-call contract and say, what other possibilities exist? Because I, I do not know what they are. The only thing I can tell you is police enforcement is not an option, well, I mean, police enforcement is an option, but it's not the answer, because they can't sit there all the time. I mean, that's like, to achieve what a physical mitigating piece to this would be, is cheaper than hiring another police officer to sit at Donald and Moss Trail. And like I said, I, I needed to have this conversation with you all. We will go back to Mr. Hill and say, what other options? And we have talked, we have talked about the quasi roundabout and things of that nature, but I don't have an answer for you tonight, simplest term.
So the, the radar speed limit signs, how effective are they?
Well, people like to see how fast they can go. I'm not, I'm not trying to be smart, but...
Don't we have some of these?
Huh? It, it, it is successful, but I'm just saying it...
Did it help?
It helped on my street, I think, but it...
Does it stay though? Like, I feel like it helps at first, and then people start to...
So on Moss Trail, on Moss Trail...
You're a law-abide citizen there.
Biggest problem areas, it's like Donald down to the curb and like the four forty block.
The two areas besides sitting on private property, the station, the, the thing that they record when they run radar is at Garrett and Moss Trail, and at Donald at Moss Trail. And I can tell you the speed for the high speed on Moss Trail is eighty miles an hour.
And where was that? What part of it?
Hmm? That was a, that was a Donald, I think.
Going towards River Gate Parkway or coming towards United?
I cannot tell.
That'd have to be coming from...
I'm just curious.
They ain't gonna go around that curve at eighty.
I can see that to be coming just towards Dixon.
On the study, it, it does have both speeds going a high rate on both.
Really? They're going that fast over at Hill?
Yeah.
What about at the hill, they're going that fast?
They're coming both ways.
So they're dropping at Hill at seventy-eight?
It clocked them coming both ways.
Yeah, but I'm standing up on the hill, I don't, it probably was a straight stretch.
I'm not sure where the radar was set up at the time. I can find out.
It was, it was, what would that be, north of Donald, I'm thinking at the street stretch right there.
Yeah, I doubt anybody's gonna take that kind of eighty.
But we're talking about a traffic citation. We're not talking about the speed.
Just what it is.
Yeah.
So the roundabouts, I don't know how big the roads gotta be, or how much space you gotta have. Is this road constructed where you could put a roundabout on?
We would have to buy some property and do about it. I'm not, I'm sure it can be done. Anything can be done.
I'm just like Mayor Tenny, I'm not a big fan of the speed cushions. I do understand y'all need help, and I wanna help y'all all we can, but I wanna find a solution for this. I'm just, the speed humps, I drive an emergency vehicle, and I promise you, people say, well, they could straddle it. You can't.
Well, and...
Well, I'm sorry, we're looking for a solution, and this is not a solution, so...
But we're, I, I wanna find a solution, I do.
I'd like to come up with one.
So...
Well, Mr. Fay, wait a minute. Let's, let's don't get excited. He's just, he's here to work on a solution. That's what we're, he's not saying we're not doing speed cushions. We're here to, to solve it. We're gonna do something, and we're gonna make it slow down. That's what we're here for. He's not, he drives an ambulance for a living, so he's been in the position and he knows.
And it may come to speed cushions, and if that's what we gotta do, that's what we'll do. I'm not saying we're not gonna do it.
But, but, gentlemen, let's, let's not do this. This is not good for either of us. We're gonna work together here.
Okay, the speed cushion, going back, talk about emergency equipment. So these are designed where a fire truck can straddle them. A fire truck can straddle them, Chief Reeves is measured. The problem is, an ambulance will not.
Will not.
Police car will not, and our fast car will not. And that was the original purpose of taking them, and Vice Mayor Duncan, your, your question a minute ago about the speed table, that's why some of these are going to this route to alleviate some of that.
So they don't go around?
Yeah. So that's, you know, that, that is where we are. I, I guess my question is, based on comments that I had received, do we look at other alternatives that probably is gonna be more costly, which, which is fine. I don't, I'm not saying anything, but I'm just needing some direction, because I don't feel like there's a consent that the way the policy was written is the way everybody might feel this evening. I, I mean, and I, and I understand, I'm just needing some direction here.
Yeah, I'm not quite clear that a roundabout would work on this road with my experience with them. Not just the width, but you usually have traffic, traffic coming from at least more than two directions, and you've just got these two. You don't have them coming in.
And the other thing about the roundabouts, they're basically just up there in the curb, and I think, I mean, they're up there to stop sound.
You have to have more than one on this road, and you're not gonna want more than one.
Yeah, I mean, the long straightaways, you're not gonna have a roundabout there anyway, and I, I don't see how the roundabouts are gonna be as effective.
Basically, the best solution right now we're looking at is speed humps, the most efficient, and with, which the cost don't matter, I don't care what we gotta spend to slow traffic down, that ain't no big deal. But I, I guess the easiest, quickest, easiest way to find out is the speed humps. If, if it is the speed humps, that design, that's the design I would wanna go with.
And if we install these, what is maintenance and everything on these? I'm ju, I'm just curious, since I don't know anything about them.
I, I'm gonna be a hundred percent honest.
You don't know either? I'm just curious.
Kind of like something you heard from me earlier today. I, I, I don't know, and I, I can find out.
I just didn't know, like, if they wear out after five, ten years, and we have to repla- I'm just curious. I have no experience with them, since we don't have them in the city. I'm just curious, you know?
I have watched more videos about installing speed cushions than I may ever get past, but...
And if the repercussion is we put these in and they don't work, do we take them back up? I mean, I don't know that we have.
Well, the situation that you get into, and you take them back up, you have bored probably twelve to fourteen holes into the asphalt.
Of the road.
Um...
So it's a permanent solution, is where I'm getting at. If we do this, it is the permanent solution.
So let, let me, let me offer this suggestion. I wanted to hear you all tonight before we did anything. I mean, yes, we got a plan, I, I've got a policy, excuse me, we got a policy. We had, we do have a plan for this particular road that I've been focused on. Let us go back to Mr. Hill, who was our traffic engineer from Kimmely Horn, and just say, okay, this is, this is where we are. There's not a lot of fans of speed cushion. What would be your plan be? Because at the end of the day, we can say, this is gonna be great, that's gonna be great, but he's the one that's gonna be able to look at the width of the road, the intersections, the, how the top, topographically it challenges the hill there and so forth, that we, we're not, we're not prepared to speak on.
If we have another meeting like this, can we have him here to ask questions?
Uh, we probably could, if he's not already booked.
It'd be easier to ask him questions.
Now, I will, I will tell you all, I may or may not be here at the next meeting, so...
That, Mr. Ellis, we can all still have a discussion meeting between the, just the council and him, if we had to make a special meeting, call a special meeting for it as well.
You have like a work session?
Okay. A study session.
Study session.
So I'm, I'm not against that, if we, if that's what it takes to get it done quicker, get him in there.
And I'm not, I'm not saying that he cannot be here at the next meeting, I just, I can't speak for him.
Well, I'm not sure.
Right, and that's, that's my point. If, if he can't come on a meeting night, we can, us five board members, I'm sure we wanna get this solved for the, the citizens, and we'll be glad to do a special study session if we have to.
Yeah, we'll have to advertise it as a public meeting and everything, so let, let me, let us talk to him tomorrow, probably let Mr. Presley reach out to him, they've become best friends. And I mean that in a good way, because Jack has really worked with him on this and some other things that we've got going on in the city, and I appreciate his efforts.
So is there, you may be on, is there a standard of how, how far out you space these? Is there a, a standard on that, or a recommendation, or...
Um, there is, there was a recommendation in that plan. Commissioner Anderson, I, I don't remember. I'll, I'll look and see what it says. My guess is, it's about three hundred and fifty feet apart.
Okay. What, the question, I mean, the question is, is, I know we're having this discussion tonight, just talking about it, but if we're having that big of a problem, and these people are saying cars are traveling seventy and eighty miles per hour on Moss Trail, do we need to go in and try to do something?
Well, the, the traffic study that we did, it, it wasn't coming back at that, we had one citation written for that. I, I can't say that that's what, what it was, and I will say it scored probably higher than any other street according to the policy that we have.
Is there any temporary signage we could put up like them radar signs, or is that a waste of time, till we get this problem solved?
We can take a passive approach and do some, when I say passive...
There were some options.
Non, non-physical measure, I'm sorry. We can do some non-physical measures to see what impact that, that would have in it.
When we, and we could probably do that quicker than we could by...
We could do that probably tomorrow.
And we know we've had some success on Caldwell with the radar box.
Yeah.
And, and do we still make our signs in-house? So that's not a matter of having to wait on anything for that. And on the roundabouts, did, Terrence, did he, see the one that talked about not having enough room?
You know, I, I...
And I know the locations that we're talking about, where we have cross streets is, is in curves and on a hill, but I know that at that particular, those pictures that I sent you from Germantown, they run through a, a housing area.
Yeah.
So it's not like it's, you know, four-lane highway kind of thing. It is a residential area.
Was that, was that one, that one's mainly for park, for walkers though, wasn't it?
No, ma'am, no.
It wasn't? It was for, it was for driving?
It's, it's ma, it's, it's designed to slow the traffic down. That's what it's saying, and...
I didn't know if that was the one in, in reference to when the walker got hit.
And I, I would say...
Different part of Germantown that these pictures are.
Did we, did we mention three-way stops? I mean, if you put a three, I'm just shooting here, but if you put a three-way stop at Garrett and... But if you put a three-way stop at Garrett and a three-way stop at Donald, is that a solution to this problem?
I do not, I, I do not see that it's a solution, and this is the reason why. It, that is dependent upon enforcement. It's not a physical measure. And plus, it doesn't qualify anywhere under the manual and uniform traffic control devices. Um, now, when Mr. Terrence Hill comes, we're gonna ask him that question, and he can explain it to you far better than I can.
We talked about that earlier, and the stop signs are, they're right there on top of the hill and at the bottom of the hill. And I think our biggest problem is on the straightaways.
It sounds like it's between Donald and the curb down there.
You have two sections that I would anticipate is trouble. One is coming off of their, um, on the south end where they probably just hit it and gone. Probably slowed down some on top of that hill, and then when they get down to the bottom, they just gun it again.
And in, in the policy... In the, in this policy, is there an exit strategy if for some reason that they did not work?
No, sir, just taking, taking them out. And I, I know some of you all have heard me say this before. Other cities have, has done similar things, and a- and the neighbor, neighborhoods really wanted them, but soon after they put them in, they really wanted them taken back up. And now, the only city that I can really reference, and the reason why I know this is, City of Brentwood really got to a point where they said, okay, we're, we're done with it unless the neighborhood, when I say neighborhood, I'm talking about HOA pays for half of it, 'cause they kind of put skin in the game, and they were a little bit less at risk, um, from a cost perspective.
I have heard other cities talk about that they had to get the neighborhood to approve it as well, like get a...
Well, and...
Not just HOAs. It wasn't just HOAs, some of the cities. But this was like a city, they, they chose the block areas, and they had to have at least so many percentage of the neighbors agree that they must...
And that's something that we're probably ought to look at, including to mail out ballots to those on those streets. Now, if no one, uh, returns them, I, I, I don't know exactly where to achieve it, but it requires seventy-five percent, if I remember correctly, um, for it to move forward. But this, this has been very good, and like I said, I'm... We gotta come up with some solutions of how we're going to do it. Like I said, I just felt like not everyone may be comfortable with the speed cushion, and I understand that. But we've gotta figure out what Plan B is to make it work. And I will let Mr. Presley work with, um, Mr. Hill, see if we can get something scheduled, and let him, um, answer any questions far better than I did.
I do think that we should reach out to the neighborhoods if, if that's gonna be the choice that we just... If that's what they want, then that's what they get.
Okay.
And that recourse on us is, at that point...
Well, the, I would finalize my policy changes before I did that. I mean, I, I think we're...
No, I agree.
I don't disagree with you. I think if we're gonna make any changes to it, we need to do it before we ask someone, give false hope, and then it's not in the policy to even do.
Oh, I'm not saying ask now, I'm just, that's something we should really consider.
I agree.
Any more discussion on this item? Any more Commissioner comments before I, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Can I make one comment, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
Um... We were elected by the City of Goodletsville to represent their voices. I feel like that's what I'm doing when I bring up something. And I notice a pattern now of things I bring up, oftentimes they're not getting a second. At a minimum, I think we owe it to the community, to the voices that contact us, that contact me, to discuss something. If something ends up being a no, ends up being a no. But to not even bring something up for a discussion and debate it as elected leaders, I think is a very unfortunate dodging of an issue. That's all I have.
Any other Commissioner comments? Hearing none, do I have a motion to adjourn?
Is that moved?
Thank you. Do I have a second?
I'll second.
Thank you. All in favor, say aye.
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 This meeting is adjourned.